To the Republic which stands one nation in the God invisible with a vision just as proud.
Thank you. Would someone like to move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. First we'll have recognition of students, staff and public. And we are going to have an, um, a resolution regarding Career and Technical Education Month. Would someone like to?
Chair. Got that first?
Okay.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached proclamation proclaiming February 2015 as Career and Technical Education Month in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas February 2015 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, Minnesota Association of Career and Technical Education and Governor Mark Dayton. And whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education provides students with college and career readiness and is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce, which fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas career and technical education gives students experience in practical applications and technical preparation and provides the integration of technical and academic content, thus improving the quality of their education and affords students leadership opportunities in their schools and their communities. And whereas career and technical education offers individual lifelong opportunities to learn new skills validated by technical skill assessment, which provide them with expanded career choices. And whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts between career and technical educators at the secondary and post-secondary levels, along with business and industry partners, stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now therefore, we, members of the Bloomington School Board, proclaim that February 2015 is observed as Career and Technical Education Month in the Bloomington Public Schools. Is there any discussion of this? Hearing none, all in favor of the proclamation and the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Uh, the proclamation is going to be accepted by Debbie Belfry, Career Development Coordinator.
Chair Bartolata, Board Members and Superintendent Fujitaki, thank you so much for recognizing Career Technical Education Month. Just a reminder to talk about some of the programs involved in career technical education. Our technology education departments are under this umbrella. Our business and marketing courses and departments in our high schools and, uh, family consumer science, middle school and high school both. Our work-based learning programs also fall under career and technical education. Career education also falls under career and technical education, as well as health occupations, agriculture, agriculture education, of which we have no programs, but may in the future with our career academy. So, um, I'm just happy to represent all of those students and the staff that, um, are in those departments, as I said, both middle school and at our high schools. And generally, I bring some students along or staff person along, um, to talk about one of our career technical education programs. And tonight, um, we're going to see some pictures that originated out of our career and college academy and a contact, um, that Gary Crescent had made with, um, a company called Extreme Sandbox in Hastings, Minnesota. And so we had some students from Kevin Bass's manufacturing class, um, have an experience at Extreme Sandbox last week. They looked warm and toasty, the wind chill was thirty below that day. The cabs were heated. But, um, students actually got to take, um, half a day to learn about occupations that have to do with construction and manufacturing specific to equipment. And you can see the pictures of the equipment that the students actually got to experience. They got two different experiences. And they also had some training and some occupational information, uh, session in the morning, um, some safety training that day. And they also had an opportunity to go into another part of the building where there was more equipment to learn about occupations, um, in diesel maintenance and diesel mechanics. So it was a exposure for them. They have this type of opportunity, obviously. The pictures were great, the students really enjoyed it. As a parent signed off on their field trip permission slip, uh, we had that, a parent ask if he could go along as a chaperone. And so he came along with us that day. So it was a wonderful experience. Ziegler Cat, one of our neighbors and business partners is, um, obviously provides that equipment to that site and had one of their employees be a part of that. So it was a nice Bloomington connection all around with our partners in the community also. So, um, I was just happy to bring those pictures and hopefully you got to watch some of the video that, um, some of the TV stations took out there. So it was, uh, a nice representation of Bloomington students becoming engaged in their community. Any questions?
All right. Hearing none, thank you Debbie.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on. Would someone like to move part A of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, part A includes our minutes and our personnel items, field trips and contracts and our finances. All in favor of part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Brings us to part B. Number one is a bid award for Oak Grove Elementary School mechanical and security improvements. Would someone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair.
Please.
All right, this is a, this is a long one, would you like me to read every item? Do you want me to? What do you want?
I defer to Mr. Holman.
All right, well, I'll read the first part. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the following bids for facility improvements at Oak Grove Elementary School. There are seventeen different items. And, uh, let's see. And then I'll just read, and authorizes the administration to enter into contracts with the above vendors to accomplish this work.
Chair second?
Second.
Thank you. Rod?
Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board Members. I'm here tonight, uh, to ask for your approval on the bid awards for the Oak Grove Elementary Mechanical and Security Projects that will be done this summer. Uh, the projects, the funds for these projects will be from our alt facility, uh, bonds and, uh, pay-as-you-go levy and also our capital projects levy. We've vetted these through both our, uh, architects and our construction management company, and they recommend, uh, moving forward with these bids.
Someone have any questions for Rod?
Just, just notation, the total bid package came to six million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And, um, from the list of all of the different, um, bidders, there were, uh, adequate vendors bidding on them, so it was a good package deal that we wound up with.
For the most part, there were, there were a couple of items that were, uh, only one bidder. As you can see, one of the biggest ones, the mechanical, um, we denied or the board denied a bid at the last board meeting because we only had one bidder. The bid that came in for this bid, for this mechanical, was in line with what we had budgeted, so we, uh, they recommended that we accept it.
Any other questions?
So the one, the steel package materials only, that's the one that we rejected last time?
No, this is not, none of this is part of what we rejected last time.
So the one here that there was no bid, the steel package materials only, number two, is that going to be rebid?
What they'll do is it's a small dollar amount, so they'll get quotes for that from different companies to be able to accomplish that. It's under the, the hundred thousand dollar bid loss. So what we do with these packages, we try to put everything together, all in one, see who will bid on them, we'll get as many bids as we possibly can. Items that aren't bid on or that we don't feel that is a good bid, we'll pull them out, we'll have either the board reject it or if there's a no bid. And then, uh, Kraus Anderson will go back and, uh, get proposals from the different companies to try to get them to do that work.
Okay, so one of these other companies will probably end up doing that one, or?
It's either one of these companies or it could be a different company that isn't even on this list.
So if we don't get someone to do that, that one, this whole, this whole job can't move forward, correct?
That we'll be able to do it.
Okay, okay. Okay, so at the last meeting that we had, I know we're talking about, we got the one bid and it was, it was pretty high and you were saying that a lot of that has to do with, there's a lot of jobs going on right now, so it's moving the market higher. Did we see that trend here, or these, these bids, are they coming higher than what we're budgeting for?
Overall, I mean, we're seeing the elementary, the cost of an elementary to complete on a yearly basis has been increasing. I think it, uh, the projection for this last year has been about a seven percent increase in inflation, uh, between years. We have projected over time about a five percent increase, so it's a little bit higher than what we were expecting. But these are, um, within the estimates that they came up with before the bids went out. So that's what, kind of, if they see that there's a, going to be about a seven percent increase over this last, or over last year, that's how they'll build the original budget for those projects.
Okay. Is there any state statute or school board, uh, policy that dictates that we have to take the lowest bidder, or is that pretty much to our discretion? How does that whole thing work?
Basically, what we have for, in our bid specs, that we have, we go for the lowest bid unless there is a reason for not accepting that bid. You can do, um, another bid process that is a more complicated bid process, that it opens it up to looking at more things. We felt and, and going through legal counsel, felt that doing the lowest bid process with, having our, uh, our construction managers and our architects vet those different companies is probably the best way for us to do it.
Okay, and do we give any consideration to different vendors versus in-state, or in-state versus out-of-state, or do we look at just the bottom line of who's, offers the lowest bid?
For the most part, I think we'd look at, at what the lowest bid is at this, at the point in time. Um, we usually don't see that many outstate bidders on, on projects like this. There might be outstate, so it might be St. Cloud area or, um, other areas like that that want to come in and do some of the business. But usually it's kind of the same groups of people that are bidding on all these school projects throughout the state.
Okay, 'cause of these seventeen ones, sixteen of them are Minnesota companies and one of them's, uh, the Wisconsin company, the Red Cedar Steel Erectors from Menominee, Wisconsin. So is, is that typical that we, so we don't, that's not very typical that we get out-of-state ones?
No, there's not many of, unless it's something really specialized or, or it's a piece of equipment that we might need to go out-of-state for, but for the most part it would be within state.
So when we have an out-of-state contractor, but they're doing work in Minnesota, do they declare that revenue and pay taxes in Minnesota, or do they pay that in their home state?
They would pay it in their home state.
Okay, and would that be the same if they hire employees from another state? Those employees would, would then?
There's, with, with employees, it's more of a, you pay the taxes in the state that you, um, that you work, you're paying employee taxes and then it gets reimbursed to that state, Wisconsin, back and forth on those type of taxes.
So if they're Wisconsin residents, they would pay Minnesota taxes on their income?
They pay Minnesota taxes on their income where their job is, but then there is some relief between the two. And I'm not an expert on personal taxes, but I know there's a retribution between the two based on what state you live in.
Okay, and so same thing if they, it's an out-of-state contractor doing work here, do they follow their state's labor laws, or do they follow our state's labor laws?
They would follow our laws because we're putting in, within our specs, everything is to be dealt with, within the state of Minnesota. So an example is, a lot of times we have issues with different companies, want to have in the contract that, um, their company is, let's say, the recent one was out of Washington, DC. And since they're a national company out of Washington, DC, they want to have any litigation to be in Washington, DC. We have always made sure in our contracts that everything is within the state of Minnesota.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my preference, is that all of our contractors are, you know, Minnesota companies, you know, because we're, this is the people's tax dollars that we're spending, and I don't like seeing that going to another state. So I mean, when we're hiring the, uh, the Reds Cedar Steel here, their money that we're giving them, they're paying, it's going to mean the profits in Wisconsin, so they're paying taxes in Wisconsin, correct?
I would say that that's where that company is, so yes, they're paying taxes in Wisconsin. Uh, the only thing we have to be cautious of, of saying things like that is, we also want to have the best deal for our taxpayers. So if it costs us more money to pay for, to do it with a Minnesota company, do the taxpayers want to spend more, just to spend on a Minnesota company? It's always a difficult situation of saying you want to spend more for just, to spend local versus putting out a competitive bid and whoever's the most competitive bidder gets the job.
For your information, the statutory language requires you to accept the lowest responsible bidder. So it gives you a little wiggle room, but, uh, it doesn't allow you to pick and choose which states you're going to favor.
So you couldn't just say, "We're going to disqualify that one because it's out of, for the sole reason of it being out of state?"
No, you couldn't, no.
That's too bad. Because yeah, to me personally, I mean, that, that's a pretty big deal of us, you know, as a taxpayer and as someone who sits on this board, who decides how we spend taxpayers' money, I don't like the idea of us sending our money to another state, but.
I understand.
There's nothing I can do about it.
Although the legislature, I think, probably determined the lowest possible price is the benefit to the taxpayer and not whether or not it's a Minnesota corporation or not. That's my guess, I don't know why, otherwise they wouldn't make that law, I wouldn't think.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, question?
You may, Chair, Rod, and on these projects, these special projects, this one, there's always a project manager with Kraus Anderson and the architects are all the leaders of this.
Correct.
So it doesn't fall on you or our?
We have our central maintenance, uh, Tim Reebok and Dave Ross are the main two people that are involved in the process, along with the building chief. But for the most part, the day-to-day activities and the rest are done by, um, a supervisor on site by Kraus Anderson.
Clearing more questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we're going to have a report, an update on personalized growth plans. Our Assistant Superintendent is going to lead the discussion.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the board. Tonight, I'm pleased to be able to introduce, uh, to you, Ms. Natalie Goldberg. Natalie has been a counselor here, uh, in our district for nine years, working both at the middle school and at the high school levels. But before I let Natalie share additional information about herself and her role, I want to take a minute to create the context for the work that she and the district will be engaged in. In your materials, you should have a copy of the refreshed strategic plan. And on that, you'll notice that in the lower left section, under vision, it says, "Each learner will have a personalized growth plan." Well, that language was specific and prescriptive and, uh, the design and development of our personalized growth plans, or PGP's, as we're calling them, is a critical first step, um, for us to create our pathways to graduation system. Our goal, uh, is to have first-generation PGP's, and we're saying first generation because we know they'll evolve over time. But we want to have those ready for all secondary students for the start of next school year. Uh, we know this will be a multi-year process as we move forward, but that's, our, our goal is to focus on the secondary, uh, schools and students first. Natalie has been selected as the point person for this project, and of course, she's going to be working with many other people on design and development. But we felt it was important to have someone with her background and experience leading this design and development effort as we move forward. I think this, it's also important, this is an opportunity for us to demonstrate to our community and to our stakeholders, uh, that we're listening. And maybe more importantly, that we're using their feedback. As you know, you hosted a series of stakeholder meetings where we collected feedback regarding pathways to graduation and the design and development of personalized plans. We created an executive summary of that feedback, which is available out on our district website. And Natalie and, uh, our team will be using that feedback as we create, uh, those personal growth plans for our students. So while there is lots of work to be done, uh, one of our natural first steps was putting Natalie, uh, in a position to begin that design and development of these plans and what they'll look like for our students, uh, parents and staff as we move forward. It's clearly an important step in achieving our district vision and in making pathways to graduation come to life. So with that, uh, I'd like to introduce Natalie Goldberg, uh, our Personalized Growth Plan Development Specialist. And Natalie, if you would, why don't you share with the board a little bit about yourself and maybe what drew you to the personalized growth, uh, planning?
Thank you. Chair Bartolata, School Board Members and Superintendent Fujitaki, thank you for having me this evening. Um, as Chris mentioned, my name's Natalie Goldberg and, um, I have been working in the school district, as you mentioned, for nine years as a school counselor. Prior to my work in Bloomington, I was a classroom teacher and counselor in School District 196 in the Rosemont Schools. So I, I feel that my background, not only as a counselor, but as a classroom instructor, are really helpful, just being in the classroom, seeing the needs of the students on a daily basis. I've worked at the middle school and high school levels, so I have experience with students grade six through twelve. I do have an elementary education, um, license, as well as a school counseling, um, license, K through twelve. As I work with students, I'm just really interested in helping them pursue their passion. One thing, uh, that I, I'm really excited about this work is putting together a proposal where we can systematize the work that we're doing with our students, rather than, you know, as a counselor, we're able to do work with, some work with all students, but we're doing a lot of individualized work right now, and I feel that there's more that we could be doing, um, systematically for all our students. So that'll be, um, some of my job moving forward. I don't know if you have any questions for me or anything else about my background that I can answer?
No more questions?
Questions?
Go ahead, you were.
You go ahead.
All right. Natalie, I spoke to you just a little bit beforehand, and my question then was, um, in the intervening time, since we've had an opportunity to talk to, um, community members, have, have, have you had any other in, uh, input? Say, for instance, from parents, we spoke a little bit about parents saying, "What can I do to help?" Can you just sort of recap that conversation a little bit?
Yep, I was just sharing before the meeting, so as, as the words kind of got, gotten out in the Jefferson community that I'm transitioning over here, I've had some phone calls and emails from parents that I've established relationships with over the years that have said, "I'd love to, um, share some insight, I'd love to be part of anything, um, moving forward." Especially our families that have had, you know, multiple students go through the school system, wanting to collaborate and share what's worked well for their students, where they feel, um, maybe a little bit more effort could be helpful. So I've had a lot of families reaching out, I've had students as well that have said, "Hey, do you need some kids to help you with your work?" So I feel that I have really good relationships with the families and the students and the staff that I work with, and, um, I'm hopeful that that will be helpful moving forward, that I, I collaborate and, and people know that I'm somebody that they can go to. So it's exciting to get those messages from people to say, you know, "Let me help." I'm hearing from a lot of staff members as well.
That would, that's really neat, and, and I'm glad you shared that. Is there a place, is there, um, is there an inbox for those suggestions to go and, and, and is there a place, um, going forward, that the district, that we might be able to use that information and, and share that, uh, experience, um, from our, our, our community members?
One of the things we, so it would probably be worth consideration for the board to schedule even a, a study session sometime into the spring. What we're, what we're really doing now is taking all of the, the feedback we had, the ideas, uh, the work that our technology team has done, the work that Dr. Heistad has done, and start trying to actually create what this might look like. And take a bunch of the tools and start building it. As we do that, we're going to be soliciting feedback, so we anticipate at those opportunities saying, "Well, what do you think about this?" We're trying to build the bridge. If you remember the, when we went out for the stakeholder meetings, one of our graphics was a bridge that didn't align. We, we don't want that to happen, so as we're building that bridge, we're going to try to continue to solicit feedback. "How does this work for you?" Are the ways, which is why I said, "We believe this is, you know, first generation." This is version one of something that will evolve as we move forward. So as we begin to build, we'll be putting it out there and soliciting feedback. "How does this work for you?" And from a variety of different stakeholders, because it works, what works for a student might be different than what parents are looking for, different than staff are looking for. So as we design and develop that, we'll continue to solicit feedback on, on what we're building.
Great, it's, it's just really exciting to see.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Jim?
Okay, thank you. I was just, you know, still concerned about the plan, you know, and, and as I've been trying to memorize it, you know, so that, if somebody asked me, I, I'm sure you have that well-memorized by now too. But have we distributed this, like, to every school and every milestone, um, area? You know, so that as this gets more and more, you know, surrounded to the people, given out to the people, so that the schools have it, as well as, you know, it's on our website and everything else like that, but at the milestone level, you know, so that the third graders will know it, the seniors know it, or the freshmen know it too, that as they come in, that, that's our big emphasis, personalized growth plan is theirs.
I think communication-wise, it's gone out. As we begin to design and, and people start using the tool, I think it starts becoming more tangible to them. It's, it's conceptual, the, the graphic makes sense, but I think once we start having that tool and they interact with it, then it's tangible, then, yep, this is my plan. A little bit more ownership with that.
More, a more subtle approach as we work with all the milestone, uh, and the areas in it, rather than just, here, a big data dump, you know, this is what's happening, which probably caused more questions than, than just a slower process. All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
What are you imagining the plan will look like? Is it a document? Is it a website? And then, how much input and flexibility is there? So does a student say, "Well, this is sort of what my interest areas," and then we say, "Okay, well, here's some things that you might consider," and then tomorrow they say, "Eh, I don't want to do that, I want to do this." So what, what are you imagining the, the plan to be and, uh, and look like?
I, I think probably a variety of tools. I mean, definitely that, that piece, you know, having some information on the websites. We've been talking about utilizing the tools that we already have, such as the hub, you know, merging some different things within that as well. You know, I, I feel we're, we're very much in the beginning stages, you know, I'm just transitioning over here, but I do see somewhat of a binder or some kind of, um, curriculum notebook that we put together where we're identifying what the targets are and the standards and, um, you know, there's also going to be discussion, you know, what are we doing for all students, what do we do for some, what are we doing for a few? You're right, I mean, students' interests are evolving and I'd, I'd like to see a plan where we have some flexibility with that as well. I mean, some of our students. I mean, some of our students clearly know what their path is and we can attempt to be prescriptive with them if, if they know that, but certainly their interests change, their minds change. I mean, we know students in college who changed their major, you know, their, their fourth year in college, so we're, we're working with those as well. So I do, I, I see a need for it to be flexible as well. I don't know if I could say exactly right now what that's going to look like, but I think we need to account for that.
What's the, the ultimate end goal of the plan? Is it to meet the, the milestones that we've identified here or what? So if, so I'm an eighth grade student, say, and you say, okay, we have this personalized growth plan for you, and I say, well, my doctor says I'll grow another three inches. You know, outside of that, what, what are we expecting? What, I guess, how will they use, how will they use it while they navigate through our system?
So I'll speak that. The vision really would be with that child, and, and as children get older, engaging them in that conversation will be important, but their parents and support, you know, the staff and others supporting them as well as, what do you want to be when you grow up? And, and having enough information and opportunity in the system for them to start becoming informed about what that might look like, what might a career be, what are those options? Some of which, what we were hearing from the stakeholders and others are, I don't even know what I could be. Is, is there ways we can get that in the system? Once they, once they have some sense of that, to be able to put them on a pathway to experience those kind of opportunities as they move forward, really to use it as a way to focus what they're doing, make that learning relevant, rather than have a, a student go through, why am I learning this? It doesn't, not resonating with me, but really to say, you're, this is a pathway to become, whatever it is you want to become, and really make that tangible, relevant for them to be able to say, yep, part of my plan is, is putting that together. With enough flexibility that we know some of them are going to grow seven inches and change their mind and have other opportunities, I didn't know I was, that was going to happen. So that could change along the way. So we want flexibility, but we also want to make sure that we're having it be relevant for them, each learner. The other thing that this will do, I guess I'll, I'll say, I believe this to be true, we'll measure it as we go forward, but often with data, you look at large groups and you try to disaggregate and figure out about closing gaps and how do we all do this? Well, if we're focused on each learner, a, a school of one, a unit of one, your child, and they're important and they have a plan, it, they're not going to fall through the cracks, because we'll have systems and structures there to support that learner, your child, every child, as they move forward through the system. And hopefully, engagement matters. If this is a plan that I'm invested in, that I really want to have happen, and those that I'm working with, the support staff, the teachers are invested and my parents aren't, we collectively are invested, we think that we're going to see increased student achievement, we're going to see increased engagement, we're going to see closing of gaps. That's our vision, that's our belief, and so the backside accountability of that, we think, will pay off as well.
Sounds good.
Anyone else? Can I just ask one? Do you anticipate rolling this out?
We would like all secondary for the fall, so to have a tool that secondary students would engage in this coming fall, next school year.
Okay. So I think that's all the questions we have. Thank you for your.
Thank you. Thanks Natalie.
Thank you. Next, we have some policy review. The first policy will be revised policy 533 Wellness.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The result of School Board of Independent School District 271 approved the first reading of policy 533 Wellness.
Second, thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent's chair.
Thank you.
You broke one already, huh?
Yeah, but I'm sorry, I apologize. Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, tonight we do have the first reading of our updated wellness policy. The Minnesota School Board Association, MSBA, has made a number of recommended changes to their model wellness policy. All of the recommendations from that policy have been reviewed and incorporated into our then Bloomington updated wellness policy, and that's before you now. Due to the volume of changes, I am not going to read through the entire policy this evening, but I would like board members to know that the policy and regulations have been reviewed and discussed by food service, operations, academic services, and student services staff, and that the policy does meet all state and federal legislative requirements. So at this time, while I would submit the first reading of policy 533 for your consideration, I also know that Director Oliva had sent some thoughts about policy language, and I would encourage you as a board to maybe discuss some of that in the policy, because there's a lot of change to this policy. So administration, remember, has the opportunity, will take your feedback over the next couple of weeks, and then we can refine the policy language and bring it back to you for a second reading on March 9th at that board meeting.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
This might be operator error, Chris, but I'm using this Google Docs, who knows what I'm looking at. 2B?
I think you lopped off a line on there.
Or maybe, maybe not.
School environment should promote and protect student well.
I think when you open it from first class though, it didn't do that. I looked at it this morning.
Well, see, I figured it was operator error, but.
Policy 2B, I'll read, here's what I have. The school environment should promote and protect students' health, well-being, and ability to learn by encouraging healthy eating and physical activity.
All right, there's stealth language there.
I don't want you to prove stealth language, so we'll make sure that you get actual language.
Yeah, it's, if you go into the first class version and open it up in Word, it's, it's all there.
Well, I guess we have to talk to the technology department about that.
All right, the switch is off.
Or maybe if you don't look at it in the preview mode, it might show up the whole thing.
Okay, do you have something?
Are you looking at, is this the one you were looking at?
Anyone else have anything regarding this?
That was a question I had, but the, the fact that there are so many revisions or nuances, the MSBA model gave you plenty of template.
Yeah, you're looking at basically their recommended language with Bloomington, I mean, we just pulled it into Bloomington's format.
Right, okay.
Yep.
So I guess just for discussion, what I had mentioned to Chris Lennox was that it seemed like some of the language that they use is, I don't know, wishy-washy, it isn't saying we're going to do this, like for instance, it says, the school environment should promote versus school environment will or shall promote.
Shall or may.
And it seemed like some of the things, like if you look at A, the school board recognizes that nutrition, education, and physical education are essential components of the educational process and that good health fosters student attendance and academic performance. To me, that doesn't really sound like a policy, that sounds like we're just stating an opinion. And so, and so, and I sort of get this way with a lot of the MSBA policy, their model policies, seems like they have a lot of words to say what could be summarized in a couple of sentences. And so the example that I had sent earlier, if I can get back to it, was something to the effect of, and I had it pulled up and now I lost it, I'll get it here.
Quite a technological difference.
Yeah, it was something, it would say, so to summarize that whole page, it said, in order to foster good health, attendance, and academic performance for our students, the district shall provide students with access to a variety of affordable nutritious foods, make reasonable accommodations for the religious, ethnic, and cultural diversity of the student body in meal planning, provide a clean and safe environment, as well as adequate time for students to eat, and provide opportunities for students to be physically active before, during, and after school. So I said, if, if we said that was our policy, we could save that whole page in one sentence, and it would be very specific, like we will do these things, the administration will provide this and we'll do this in, in the food service. I don't know if we have to do that. Number or letter C, we could say, furthermore, the district shall have an advisory committee, because it says, the district should encourage people to get involved. I mean, we can tell, we can announce here, like, oh, hey, if you have any suggestions, you can send us an email, but people could do that anyway. So I said, well, if we're really going to do that, maybe we should have advisory committees, so we could say, the district shall have an advisory committee to the school board consisting of students, parents, teachers, food service staff, and other interested persons in implementing, monitoring, and reviewing the district nutrition and physical activity guidelines. So I think if we change the policy to read more like that, it'd be more specific and more, I guess, prescriptive, like these are what we are going to do versus sort of having a policy of suggestions and opinions. So I don't know how you guys felt about that, and women felt about that.
Guys, is a generic term, I, I assume? I'm okay with, I'm okay with the summary. I know that the MSBA can be a little wordy, there's a little filler in there.
I guess my question for Mr. Lennox, since you were the one that would be carrying out this policy, do you have any preference either way? Do you like the ambiguity? Would you rather be ironclad, airtight?
So a couple of things about the wellness policy. While it falls to me to bring to you, it involves a number of different programs and people, so.
USDA administration carrying it out.
Yeah, so any, you know, I don't, I had the opportunity, thank you, Director Oliva for sending that event, so I had an opportunity to look through that. I have no reservations with what Director Oliva has proposed, if that's easier and less wordy, have no issue with that at all. As you know, anytime you start getting into the will or may, then, then that, that you do get, you know, you will do this, there's no exception, you might do it, gives you a little bit of flexibility. But based on what Director Oliva proposed, there's nothing within policy with wellness that I would be, I would be worried about. We, you know, we're in compliance, right? I mean, so as we go through this, food service is already using the USDA regulations, we have our curriculum committees that are following the, the wellness, the health, and physical education standards. So there's nothing really underneath this policy that I would be concerned about. We can write it either way and we'll be in compliance, so.
I guess like, well, just for example, if we're doing the, the wellness committee or, you know, there'd be a committee for the wellness and all that. If we went from shall to, or should to shall, and then we try to set one up and we don't get anyone, any buy-in and no one wants to join the committee and so we don't have one, then we're not in compliance of our, our resolution or our policy, which I think could be problematic.
And I'd offer that back to the group, an advisory committee is yours, right? So board would have a committee that they'd meet with to talk about wellness, to pass those recommendations back to administration for implementation. So shall have a committee means one of you will be a chair, and I mean, not that administration wouldn't be present, we'd have to be, but it's your advisory committee, so.
Yeah, I, I guess for me, it's, like if we look at, at C, the district encourages the involvement of students, parents, teachers, food staff, and other interested persons in implementing, monitoring, and reviewing district nutrition and physical activity guidelines. I mean, to me, that doesn't really hold weight, it's kind of like saying, eh, we think that you should probably drive at a safe speed. Right, or if you say, no, the speed limit is 55, or 35 or whatever, then you say, okay, no, that, that is what it is. And so if we just say, yeah, I mean, we'd encourage you to get involved if you'd like to, that, to me, that, that's kind of a wishy-washy policy, whereas if we say, no, we are going to engage stakeholders in these decisions, or, or, yeah.
How, how do you think that would look? I mean, what would, what would you envision that, that committee looking like?
I envision we would tell the administration, this is what we'd like you to do, and so you go ahead and figure out how you're going to do it. And I know that we have, I don't have the website pulled up, but I know that we have people that do this, right? And so that could be the committee, and then the committee could say, hey, we're meeting at three o'clock and whoever wants to be there can be there, and it'd probably still just be the same people, but in our policy, it wouldn't be wishy-washy, it'd be like, no, we're going to do this, we're going to review this, and then if we ever had questions, we would know who to call and say, hey, contact the, the director of food service, because we would like them to come in and tell us why the hot dogs bounce when the kids throw them on the floor, right?
Or the sweet rolls are too small.
Yeah, or, or whatever. So that's sort of what, in, in my mind, I, I'm thinking, and it probably isn't a big deal, we probably wouldn't have to change it and everything would just be fine. It's just as we go through this, I figure if we're going to do the work of going through them and reviewing them, then I'd like to see them sort of written in a way where it actually has some teeth, I guess, versus saying should, and we encourage you to participate, if that makes sense.
Sure.
I guess, you know, I, I guess I can see Director Oliva's point that maybe staff has teeth. I just have some concerns about how much staff time we want to have put on this and sending staff to another committee meeting. Our staff already is working as much as possible and have a lot of other tasks to take care of, so I, you know, if they're already meeting, maybe it doesn't matter and it just gets named a committee, I don't know, but I, I just don't want to spend, and, and if we rewrite this, you know, who's that fall to too? Is that someone here at the table or is that someone else in staff that's going to rewrite it and how much more time are they going to put into it? That if it's okay like this, then maybe we don't need to put the time into it.
Anyone else?
It might be worth contacting MSBA and ask them why they didn't make it should, or why they made it should instead of shall. There might be some reason why they didn't want to put teeth into it, might, before we go and change that, might be good to call them to see what their rationale for that is.
Well, my reservation is we've already gone through a bunch of policies and now we're going to, if, you know, I mean, they're kind of all generically how they are, and if we're going to start changing them, are we going to have some that are A, B, C, D, or and then coupled with just one sentence and, I don't know, I think we should try to stay uniform?
It, it's possible also that there may be one or two people in the general public that are interested in, if we change a may, a shall, interested in some form of litigation if something doesn't happen, doesn't work, you know, they, if the hot dog doesn't bounce high enough, or, I hate to keep pounding on the, the poor hot dogs, and they do the best they can with, with what, what they're given, but.
The chicken tenders today were delicious though, so we'll have to say. And my kid did eat, both my kids ate the broccoli, so I was surprised. It's amazing they eat things at school that they will not eat at home, so I don't.
I'm just, Tom, you had asked, is there a reason why MSBA worded it this way? And I, I bent David's ear quietly and, and if I'm summarizing correctly, that, you know, they want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up, that districts aren't setting ourselves up. We can tailor these, these policies any way we like, but, you know, the more prescriptive you get, the, the more people like to poke at them, I think. It's a highly technical term.
So I, I mean, I guess the last thing that I would say, two things, is if you aren't really saying what you want it to be, then why bother? And then the second, I wouldn't avoid changing how we create the policies just because it would be hard to go back and change all the old ones, because we'll get to those within five years anyways. I would just say, if, if we thought that taking it a different way would be better, I'd say, well, then, yeah, we're going to have some that are out of order and we'll say, it's just part of the review process, this is how we're doing it. And like I told Mr. Lennox earlier, I don't really, it really doesn't matter, I mean, it's food service, whatever, but I just thought, as we're going through these, if we see language that's like, well, what's the point, then we, we maybe want to consider changing, but it's not like I would vote against this the way that it's written.
I don't know, I kind of think the, the word encourage is good enough. I don't know if we need another government mandate, we can encourage people to take active, healthy roles in their lives, but should we dictate it? I mean, that's kind of what I'm looking, encourage, I think is strong enough language for me.
Director Sarm?
Yeah, I, I think to the point, yeah, when you put the wills and shals in there, and down in the regulations, it talks about will. down in the regulations, it talks about will, will provide, will make, will discourage, will this, shall designate, and do all those types of things. The policy is more of a general, general statement, and the fact that it has A, B, C, D, E, and F, you know, in it is even narrowing it down more than typically general statements are. So I'm, I'm in favor of leaving it pretty much this way. You know, we can wordsmith a lot of these things, and sometimes that gets into too much. But I think the way the guidelines are written, or regulations are written, you know, that's enough of, enough of directives for foods and beverages, and the various nutrition aspects that we need to do.
Well, can we just go around the table and say if we'll accept it the way it is, or if we want to change it? I mean, we've had quite a bit of discussion here, so.
Sure.
Director Stig, are you gonna start? You wanna accept it, or you wanna?
Just accept the way it is.
Jim?
I can accept it this way.
I accept it.
Okay, Rick?
I can accept it.
Okay. I'll accept it?
I'm fine with the way it's written.
I'll accept it.
Okay. So.
But, certainly want to thank Mr. Oliva, Director Oliva, for doing his due diligence on these policies.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So, let's get back to this. All in favor of this resolution as it is written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the first reading of policy 510.3, Activities and Other Student Fees.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
He resolves, School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of policy 510.3, Activities and Other Student Fees.
Second?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, this policy and the accompanying regulation provide direction on how the school board will govern the district student activity and parking fee program. The changes administration is recommending to this policy reflect updated language that is uniform with all other policies, and the removal of the word "high" from high schools to indicate an annual evaluation of these fees by administration at all schools in the district. Administration will be making the following changes to regulation. Under Section Two, Equipment or Uniform Requirements, we're recommending deleting the language in letter D. The rationale for that is that after a conversation with our activities directors, the equipment costs are really only a small fraction of the participation fee. The activities directors agree that it would be nearly impossible for them to provide an itemized value to the equipment provided. They also agree that the end result would be little or no reduction as a result of a prorated activity fee, so they're not taking away the opportunity for a student to provide their own equipment, or an athlete to provide their own equipment. They're just not prorating that fee based on that equipment provision. The second change, under Section Three, Music Instrumental Rentals, and there we would delete language in letter D. And the rationale for that is that because students in grade five are required to take instrumental music, school districts cannot charge a rental fee for materials in required courses, and therefore, we would discontinue student instrument rental fee in fifth grade. Beyond that, it is an optional course, and we can continue with rental fees for there, but by requiring it, we really cannot charge a fee. So those are the recommended changes for policy 510.3.
Thank you.
So, are we currently charging fees for fifth grade band then?
We had charged fees in the past, yep. And so that is really going away. For anything required, we should not be charging fees. So we've gone through any and all course fees or other, and removed anything required.
How long ago were we, were we charging fees?
Long time.
Oh, so it's not like a couple of years?
My kids, I remember paying fees.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I mean, that would put us out of compliance, I mean.
Which is why we're making.
Okay, yeah. So I was just wondering if we were doing that? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Just one quick question. Do we have any idea on the Section Two, where the students who wish to supply their own equipment, how many students are doing that?
I don't think it's, it's many. The activities directors, we could get that information for you. The biggest concern there is, of course, they have to go through all the safety testing. So it's unique and, and different, the rationale, so I don't think it's many who are providing their own. Really, the activities director rationale for removing that is that we would, each of the schools, provide all of that equipment regardless, right? We need to have it on hand for any student not providing, so the inventory, if you will, there's not much, if any, cost savings to prorate any of that.
I know that just the, the new baseball bats are, there's a formula that dictates which ones you can use, and barrel head, and this and that, and everything, it's just crazy to keep up, and they're always changing that, so.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Just noting the history of, of the number of revisions that we've had on this 510.3 over the years, it's always curious that all of a sudden it was revised in February 27, 2012, and now, three years later, we're doing some other significant revisions to it. So it's noteworthy that we have to keep up with these constant changes in regulations that might come up.
Anyone else?
Because, as you know, Mr. Bennett, I was here for all of these revisions in the past, and I don't recall any of them being as much as this.
So then, why were you charging for fees for fifth grade band?
Had to get this money somewhere.
What about some of the other classes, like, for instance, I know we just had to pay $7 for rollerblading in fourth grade, or whatever. Are all those gonna have to go away, too?
Anything, so we'd have to go, I'd have to go back course by course and look through all the course fees. Really, what, you can charge fees for anything that's in addition, right? So if it's something that you're going to take with you, that's in addition, if it's an experience that is optional, not mandatory, but anything that's required or mandatory, you should not be charging fees for.
I'd like to add, on the rollerblade, if you remember the release for the kids to do it, it says that $7 is a donation. It's not a required fee. So all the kids are able to participate for it in the program, but if they want to, if there's requesting, because there is a cost of doing this, we have to rent the equipment, and that cost is average donated about $7 a student.
I guess, maybe I didn't read it that closely. It was more like, Dad, I want a rollerblade, give me $7. Okay.
I'll eat your broccoli.
Here you go.
All right, is there any more discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. One more regarding fees for 2015-16. Who'd like to read this?
I'll read it.
Please.
He resolves, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the following fees for the 2015-2016 school year. Student athletic, student non-athletic activity, student instrument use, student parking, and student adult activity admission as per the attached fee list.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Lennox will take any questions regarding this.
More on fees. I have for your consideration the recommended fees for the 2015-16 school year. Specific changes I would highlight, the, within, included here are an increase to flag corps by $3 from $67 to $70, increase in marching band of $3 from $67 to $70. There is an increase in student parking fees of $5 per trimester, that's going from 85 to 90, with the yearly fee then increasing $15 from 255 to 270. There's a decrease in jazz band of $2 from 55 to 53. And of course, the discontinued student instrument user fee at fifth grade that we just talked about. All other fees are remaining the same as the 2015-16 school year. I will say, prior to coming tonight, we did have a question about what impact increasing student parking fees may have on the neighborhoods around the high schools. Would that mean kids just will park in their neighborhoods and not onsite? I talked with both high school principals, and they said they have really had no neighborhood issues with the daily contract parking. What they continue to do, though, is event parking, work with the city, police, et cetera. When some of the events happen, usually that's nights and weekends, they have been working with neighbors to try to be proactive about finding appropriate parking. So, the daily parking hasn't been an issue, but some of the event parking, they continue to work with the city and police on those issues. So, with that, just, administration is recommending approval of the fees.
Just, just one quick question. On the, the high school parking lots, do we, do we have a good feel, are, are they both, let's just say during the school day, are they both max capacity, or they?
No, no, they're not. In fact, Principal Beaton at Kennedy said, as their poverty increases, parking has gone down, and that's not because the fee is too high, it's just because many of the students don't have cars, they're not driving, they just, they don't have that as an option. So he's seen that decrease in time.
So do you think if we reduce parking to $70, that we'd get 20% more?
I asked him that. Well, so, one, at least, Principal Beaton's response was that if there's not a, regardless of the fee, there, there's not, but as with activity fees, parking fees, anything you do, the higher the fee, there's probably some loss in participation in any of those things.
And then, is there any, I know for some of our programs, we have tiers for students that can't afford, is there any sort of subsidy available if a student?
Yep, free and reduced, always a subsidy available, always working with families to try to, to figure that out with them. The tiered thing, you're thinking, usually there's a community ed sliding fee scale, but, but there's always opportunities for scholarship or assistance from our high schools and activities and other fees.
And I feel like, to provide the historical perspective, I, I mentioned that I was sort of shocked to see how much it costs, because I think when I was in school, back in my day, it was like $38 a semester, but then again, that was 1993, and so I see fees have increased since then, so.
Director Oliva, we already have a historical perspective.
Oh, we already have a story, sorry.
Yeah, when I talk to high school students, or parents of high school students, the parking fees is one of the topics that comes up most frequently. And they feel that it's very high, and that is pretty high, $20, $55 bucks a year, and they don't understand where that money, why it is so high. So could you help explain that to them, or help explain it to me, so I can explain it to them?
Sure, and I could probably use help from others, if Rod or others want to jump in. Most, some of it goes for safety and security, some of it goes for just lot maintenance, plowing of snow, maintaining, you know, the surface, lining, striping, monitoring, all of those, those things. I don't have a line-by-line item of that, but those are some of the things off the top of my head that are there.
But the cost of those, mainly was, I think, past years, it was increased from, back in that 39, and that is, as we put more security, parking lots, and in front of the buildings, that was to offset some of the cost of those positions.
So this isn't a revenue generator by any means?
No, no.
And we're still taking a loss for providing for security and snow removal?
Yes. And I know that other, if you compare it to other school districts, I'll look at, I saw that in, in Chanhassen, I believe it's like $350 a year.
My high school is free, so that's different. Anyway, and, so Kennedy, you're saying they've had some drop-off? They're not filling their parking lot? Jefferson filling their parking lot?
Uh, you know, I didn't get into that. Principal Grubner didn't offer that. Principal Beaton just offered, his had gone down, he, in his opinion, because fewer kids had cars.
Yeah, because I think it's a tough sell for parents that are already concerned about these high fees, to be raising it even more. When was the last time we raised fees on parking?
Well, this is the first time, third year for me, so first time in three years, I don't have that history beyond that. I don't know.
I just want to point out, we do run school buses for free, and that's, you know, always an option. You don't have to drive to school, but that's a privilege, so.
Anybody else? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Number five, Part B, is the closed session report from February 9. The School Board, the Superintendent, and members of the Cabinet, along with the district's legal counsel, met in closed session on Monday, February 9, for the purpose of discussing negotiation parameters. The discussion was preceded by a brief presentation on the current salary schedule. No school board action was taken or recorded. Next, that brings us to board member reports.
I'll go ahead and go first. So I had attended a selection committee, I'm on the Kennedy Selection Committee for the Senior Achievement Awards, and that, as you might imagine, is a very interesting conversation, and a lot of good applicants there. Was fortunate to attend the PBIS Roundtable over at Washburn Elementary, and I believe that was last Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. Commissioner Casillas was there, Floodwood Superintendent, Princeton Elementary Principal, Osseo Junior High Assistant Principal, of course, Andy Wilkins from Washburn, and Gina Miller are RTI specialists here from Bloomington. Education Minnesota put that on. It was really, really interesting to sit and listen and learn, and then there was some good, it made it on a couple of different news cycles, I think on Channel 5 and Channel 11, and might have been NPR there as well. And I remember reading online and then seeing, watching the news cycle, so really interesting to, just to listen, and then have some sort of sidebar conversations on, on where this is going. Had an opportunity to have lunch over at Ridgeview Elementary with Principal Abrahamsen. We had a nice tour of the building, had, what did I have? That day was pizza, salad, and diced pears. Filled me up. One of the, one of the things I just wanted to mention really quickly was that anytime that I go into a building, Steve just happened to take me around, I'm fairly familiar with the staff over at Ridgeview, but it doesn't matter what building I'm in, and what member of staff I'm talking to, whether it's maintenance, whether it's food service, you name it, the people that I talk to are always excited and energized about what they do, and the tour over at Ridgeview was no exception. One of the, one of the elements, teachers came and saw me in the doorway, and she walked up, and she's, and she's just sort of, before I knew it, I was being pulled into the conversation and into the room, and, you know, you should see this, this is really cool, and this is really neat, and, and see what we're doing with this, and these, and these students are, and they were just really having a good time. And, and the teacher's enthusiasm, and again, it's, it's staff across, across the district, the staff has such a wonderful feeling, you know, I never get a feeling that somebody doesn't want to be there, if they're having a bad day, they don't show it. Might have something to do with the fact that I have my name tag on, and I introduce myself as a school board member, but still, it's just, it's really a positive attitude and atmosphere that I'm seeing in the buildings. So, just want to make sure that I, I share that, because I see that, and maybe I don't always say it, but it, it comes through. That's my, that's my report tonight.
Anyone else?
All right. Yeah, there's been a lot of, a lot of activity, and I just want to share my perspective and appreciation for, all of the school board members now participate and visit the school. So when I go around and visit them, they've always said, you know, somebody else has been here too, and, you know, and that's it, whether it's at lunch or breakfast, or watching the school buses arrive or depart. As Dick had said, you know, they're just very appreciative of the school board, the most recent school board, of having to come around and sharing with them and finding out about stuff. So, being at its National School Board Week, I just want to thank our school board members for participating, and it, and it does make a difference when we go around and talk to the, the teachers and interrupt the. and talk to the, the teachers and interrupt the classes and do whatever we do, that's, it's just part of the, part of the game. We went over to Oak Grove Elementary to see their Read-a-Thon, and I think every elementary school now has a Read-a-Thon, and theirs was very exciting. And if they don't, they should have because it's, you know, a revenue generator for the schools, the PTAs, but all the kids love to read and all of them just are so excited when the prizes are doled out. And we also had an opportunity, a few of us went over to the transportation building to have a nice little lunch and a tour of the building too, and, and we were supposed to sign up to take a bus ride in the next couple of weeks so that we know what's really going on in the buses.
Thank you, Tom. Do you want to go next?
Somebody else can go.
Nellie, do you want to go next?
Nellie, you want to go? Sure. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for, you know, the school board appreciation week. It was so nice to receive those cards from our schools and the invitation, go to Ridgeview and have lunch with the principal. Thank you to the communications department also for acknowledging that and put it in on the Facebook page. It is true that we do take time from our, from our work and from our families, and it's just, it's just great to be able to serve the, the great Bloomington community. Got a very nice plant from the fifth graders at, from Westwood Elementary, very nice. I'm gonna make sure that I take care of it because I'm not really good with plants, but I'm gonna make sure that I do take care of it. One of my daughters is still, is already watering the plant, so that's good. And then I went to the same event at Washburn Elementary with Commissioner of Education, Brenda Cassilius, and a very interesting report and interesting to know what's, what's happening there, what's going on. And yesterday, it was quite a different event that I attended. I had the opportunity to go with City Council Member Cynthia Abrams to go to the Diamond Service Awards. I don't know if any of you have attended those, but it's, it's hosted by the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau, and it's the event, the once-a-year event that recognizes the hospitality of people who work in, in the business, in the industry, you know, and people who work in hotels and restaurants and management and all business leaders from Bloomington. And all these people that are really, you know, serving in our community that sometimes we don't get to see, that sometimes we don't recognize, but they get to be recognized there, and those are our people, our parents, who are working sometimes two, three different jobs and also have kids in our school district. So, it was really interesting to see, to see that, kind of have a, some sort of contact with, with that area and with the people that were there. Very interesting. I don't know, you know, Superintendent Fujitaki, I don't know how much or what it's the, the connection there between us and as a school district and all the businesses. I know there is big, partnership big time, but in terms of financial terms, I don't know. But anyway, it wa, it was good to be there and to be able to see that people were recognized for their efforts. And, oh, and then we just had our legislative committee meeting, just legislative committee for the board with our superintendent and administration, kind of looking at what's happening during the session right now and looking at bills and how things are evolving, what's happening, what's not happening, and what we need to track, and just, we're gonna continue to pay attention to what happens in some of, with some of those during the next couple of weeks before we bring the final proposal to the rest of the board. And we will be hosting our forum with the legislators on March twenty-first, will be a Saturday, and is that in the morning, Deb? Eight o'clock, yes. And that's all for now. That is all for now, thank you.
Strong topic. Right. Well, first of all, it was great to have the opportunity to go over to City Hall and attend the Bloomington United for Youth event where they were recognizing people for their awards for the year, so that was a great event. I also had a chance to attend the open house at our new Career and College Academy, and I saw lots of parents coming with potential students, and our partners all seemed thrilled to be part of it, so I'm hoping that we'll have great success with this new program in the fall and that enrollment will be full soon, let's hope, all right? I also, also got to go to lunch at Ridgeview, and I just, also that was very nice that we got recognized and, and also got cards and thanked for school board recognition, so that was nice to have. I didn't even know that we had that week until it happened, so. I also attended the PBI S roundtable. I was just thrilled to hear the new numbers that were released, that, you know, made the media and everything, because, you know, as most people know here, I've been a PBI S supporter for a number of years. It was great to see Eric Close, who's the head of PBI S for the state, and catch up with him, because I attended trainings a long time ago that he was part of. So, that was a great event, and I thought it was wonderful that Bloomington was the host and that they picked us as the place to hold the event that multiple schools were part of. I also attended the Oak Grove Elementary Read-a-Thon celebration. I just want to say thank you to all the PTA people that were there to give out all those awards to those kids and how much work they put in, into it, and especially to Twila Dang, who chaired it this year, and I just want to say when it was over, I didn't hear, oh, I don't think I'll do that again, she was already planning for next year when I talked to her, so she's already looking at things that she can add to it for next year, so it was great. Also at Oak Grove, I attended their Black History Month, like Parent Day they had, and they had Dr. Jeffrey Martin, who is the president of the Minnesota, no, sorry, the local chapter of St. Paul in Dakota of the NAACP, and so he was there and spoke for a while, one morning. And I also attended the, my Community Education Service Advisory Council, and the, there we covered youth summer programs, but the biggest change that's coming for parents is the summer spectrum is not going to be summer spectrum this year. It's going to have a new name, it's called SLAM, and it's for Summer of Laughs, Adventure, and More, and so they've changed some of the formats, changed a few things. It's still partnership of the City of Bloomington, Bloomington Arts Center, and the school district are all still partnering on it though, so, but there'd be, so parents should look that, you know, if you're looking for summer spectrum, that's not there anymore. And then on Saturday, I attended the parent engagement forum at Kennedy that was on strengthening the mother-child bond, and that had the Honorable Judge Pamela Alexander, who was also the guest speaker there. So, it was a good event also. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I attended the Early Childhood Pathways Advisory Committee meeting. They had presentations on our, some of our preschool offerings and shared some information that Dr. Heist had shared with members of the group about our kindergarten readiness, what we're doing, the effects it's having, and generally show that students who participate will do better in, once they get to school than children who do not participate in general. And so that was good. Also attended Ridgeview, which I'm there a lot because that's where my kids go, ate the lunch, and as Mr. Bertram said, today I ate the lunch, I was full after my first helping, however, since I have two kids, I went through the line again. And they did eat all of it, and since we don't have a committee that we can tell how wonderful they're doing, we'll just say that the food was good, my kids ate all of it, and so even the, the cooked broccoli, which I don't know, I'll have to get the recipe because I don't eat mine when I pick it up. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, brief since most everyone has said everything that I've been to, but I just wanted to, that last Thursday, I had the opportunity to go to the family engagement session at Washburn, and this is kind of like they're reinventing of the family engagement because they've kind of been having some difficulty getting parents to come to the family engagement, they haven't, they've been well-attended, and in fact, the last couple of them have been canceled because they couldn't get enough to show up, and there, there was some, people thinking that it wasn't for the entire school community, it was more for maybe just a certain section of the school community, so they kind of revamped the whole thing, and I think, you know, Mr. Wilkins wanted to, the principal there wanted to engage all the families and say, we are one community, this is for everybody, not just certain sections of our school. So, they did a, since it's I Love to Read Month, they did a round reading, and they had a camp in, and so in the, in the gym, they had, they had tents set up with little fake Christmas trees and little paper fire and little sounds of crackling, or crackling fire, and, and Mr. Wilkins was in the tent reading, and there's other teachers in the tents reading, and then in the music room, they had the, the music teacher doing campfire songs, which was a lot of fun, and then in the, in the media center, they were teaching reading strategies to, to parents and to, to students and what they could work on at home, and then of course, in the cafeteria, they're making smores, because you can't have camping without smores. And I talked to a teacher after the event, and she said this was the, the most attended, she's been doing it for three years they've been doing, and this was by far the most attended event that they've ever done. So, I just really wanted to congratulate Mr. Wilkins and the entire staff over there at Washburn at a job well done, and I look forward to the one that they're gonna do next month. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Baralana. Three things. First, the board approved refreshed strategic plan is promptly displayed on the kiosk on the side of board table. Second is that the Minnesota Department of Education Commissioner Brenda Cassilius engaged an independent firm to hold focus groups to determine how the department can improve their services, and I was fortunate to be one of two metro superintendents to be on the focus groups, it was a great conversation. The third is that the legislature is hearing bills on education, and our district's board representative, Tom Holton, and Dr. Catigan are attending the early childhood committee hearings, and another example is last week, Principal Andy Kubis from Valley View Elementary testified at a committee hearing on universal pre-K, and this week, Dr. Heistad and Chris Lennox are giving testimonies at two other committees. So, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Is there any other business? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned. And we will regroup.